Thank you, folks. For your patience. For still in our public hearings. Moving on to item number nine. This is 32 O'Beal Street. Site plan has destructed a 16,213 square foot community center. Section Block 1056.43-5-35.100. Secret Declaration. Zoan Arte is in the Rondale Historic District. Area Charity Commission, Warding Irish Cultural Center Hudson Valley Incorporated is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner who wish to speak up ahead of her?
Oh, this is, this is what not working. I'll find out if it works. Is it working? Yeah.
Hi, Barbara Stott, 66th Rue Street in New York. I'm going to read from the attorney's letter that was submitted to the city.
Are we going to read all of it?
No.
Okay.
I'm just going to do excerpts. Know that this is an excerpt version, so.
We did read the letter.
We have the order.
Okay, but there are people here that may not be privy to all of it.
But you could ask.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to extirpate this one.
Okay. Okay, great. So, this project was designated as a Type 1 action under SECRA. Type 1 designation carries with it the presumption that an action is likely to have a significant impact on the environment. And that a draft environmental impact statement needs to be prepared. I guess it went out or something. Can people hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So, every agency other than the planning board who has weighed in on this project, including but not limited to the Office of Parks and Historic Preservation, the Ulster County Planning Board, and the City of Kingston Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, have expressed serious concerns about the size and scale of this project and its potential for impacts upon the community and the historic district. The Ulster County Planning Board by letter recognized the need for, if not the obligation of, the planning board to conduct a full and comprehensive environmental review of this project. Notwithstanding, the planning board, in reliance on the environmental assessment form prepared by the applicant, the ICC, determined that this project would not have the potential for even one significant environmental impact and issued a negative secret determination for the project. It is hard to believe, after obtaining the site plan approval, ICC failed to obtain a building permit for this project within 120 days. ICC apparently failed even to request an extension of the 120-day period before the lapse of the approval. As a result, the City Office of Corporate Counsel has advised the planning board in a letter that no extension may be granted by the ICC and a new application must be made for site approval. The Corporation Counsel has made a compelling case based on applicable decisional law in the state of New York. As the planning board well knows, subsequent to the site plan approval, the ICC, without a building permit, commenced excavation of the property. This was done in a careless, slipshod, incompetent manner with no regard to the health, safety, and welfare and property rights of the neighboring properties, resulting in numerous complaints to the City of Kingston Engineering. A fair reading of the planning board's secret determination issued by the planning board evidences the fact that its negative declaration was based in large part upon the representations of ICC that the construction work and operation and maintenance of the facility would occur in full and complete compliance with applicable laws, rules, regulations, and the sanctity of the neighboring properties and the historic district would be respected. Quoting the full environmental assessment form during site construction best, this was written by the ICC. During site construction, best managing practices for erosion and sediment contract as identified in New York Standards and Specifications for Erosion and Sediment Control will be employed to control and minimize site rating and drainage conditions. The fact that the ICC has created so much havoc and disturbance to neighboring properties in the community during the preliminary excavation phase of this project, it is clear that the ICC cannot be trusted to fulfill its representations and promises of impact avoidance in its further construction of the building, a process which could take several years, and in its operation and maintenance of a high, of a multitude of high-intensity uses at the facility. The planning board now has the requisite power and authority to rescind its negative secret determination. Given the existence and complexity of the potential significant environmental impacts which are now self-evident, the planning board is urged to involve the City of Kingston Engineering Department, City of Kingston planners, or consulting planners, and such other environmental experts as it deems appropriate in order to adequately evaluate and mitigate the short and long-term environmental impacts of this project.
Thank you.
So, my name is Lynn Woods. I live at 43 Home Street, a few blocks from the ICC site. And I just want to speak as a neighbor of the resident. I walk my dog down Company Path all the time. I've lived in the neighborhood 22 years. And yes, it's true that Company Path routinely washes out when there's a heavy rain. But now, with the hill gone, basically, you know, you're having incredible erosion. I mean, I'm seeing waterfalls coming off that hill. And I'm looking at this, this article that was in the Kingston Times where one of the Irish Cultural Center representatives said, "Oh, you know, my understanding is that that path has been subjected to water runoff before and has eroded before." Exactly, exactly. That's why I think there should have been a positive declaration on the environmental impact. I mean, it's insane what's going on. The neighboring property, I've walked down there many days. The neighboring property on the left, as you're, when you're on the creek looking up, I mean, her property is washing away. I mean, I'm worried about that house coming down eventually. We know that the pattern, the climate pattern here is heavier rainfall. I'm seeing flooding in my basement I never had, only have seen in the last five years. The weather is changing. The rainfall is getting more intense. That hill is really under duress. And now that the rock is gone, which held up the hill where they were supposed to put their building, I don't know what you're going to do with it. Those properties are all at risk. So, I'm not an engineer. I'm just speaking as a citizen and concerned neighbor. But I was very, I'm very concerned about this. And when I first, I was away in May. When I came back, I saw that they excavated the site. Like many others, I was against the project on the basis of the scale. As was just mentioned, every single agency that weighed in on this said this building is too big. But I thought, okay, since they got approved, now we're going to see a building. And then nothing happened. I mean, I've never heard of excavating for a 16,000-square-foot building, and they're not building anything. So, now that I'm hearing that their building permit has expired, and I, I mean, it's absurd. I'm reading this comment that, you know, it was an oversight. How can you have an oversight for a 16,000-square-foot building? I mean, this whole process, there've been so many red flags. And I think, at this point, I think, you know, it's not a red flag. It's a cyber going on. So, if you simply renew their building permit and trust them to, I don't know what they're going to do. Do they have the money to build? I don't know why they haven't built. I mean, I think there's some really hard questions that you could ask. And I'm very concerned about what's going to happen now. As a taxpayer, I don't want to have to pay to remediate that hill. You know, if I were the neighbor, I would be thinking a major lawsuit here. I mean, I'm not concerning the Irish Cultural Center approval. I'm talking about just the damage to the property. So, I just want to share my concern. I'm not going to get into all the legalese, which I think Warren Malansky's letter covered. But I'm very, very concerned. And, you know, the other thing I want to say is that I think we all want the best for our city. You know, there's a lot of money coming into Kingston. There's a lot of change, a lot of big projects, a lot at stake here. And I think that, I'm hoping that the city will benefit, will all benefit from this. But this is a major site in the Rondale. And all summer long, it was a mess. I mean, they finally took down the sign facing the creek, but it was a mess. And this is our major, this is what people see when they come into the Rondale. So, I, so it's a very visible site. There's a lot at stake. I don't know what the solution is at this point, but I don't trust them to, to do what they've said. And I think they've had, this is the second time the permit has expired. So, I hope the planning board really gives us a lot of careful thought and comes up with the right decision that's going to really help the city and all of us, the residents, the businesses, the city. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Susan Kipperato, and I live at 24 Home Street, which I bought in 2004, so I've been in the neighborhood a long time as well. I don't want to take up your time because Lynn has actually very articulately.
Did you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Lynn has very eloquently expressed a lot of my concerns as well. But I would just like to say that I, I too do not believe that the destruction that has occurred there is because of the rainfall. I'm sorry.
I'm listening. Should I?
Can you speak to the microphone? Your work for recording this.
Yeah, it happened because the excavation was done poorly and the management was, was not adequate. And I have walked on Company Hill Path several times a week since I bought my house in 2004. It's been shocking to see the damage to the path itself and the neighboring property. I don't know how the neighbors live there and come up with this because I would buy it. It's just mind-boggling and horrible. And today I walked by there in rain, and it's just, at best, hideous-looking and embarrassing, right in the center of the Rondale. We really care about our neighborhood. And the one good thing about this whole mess has been that it's really brought us all together. But I really feel that the ICC cannot be trusted. The whole project's been poorly planned. It's been poorly managed. I don't see any reason why they should be given special consideration. The same rules that apply to everyone in this city should apply to them. And I don't see that happening yet, and that really makes me upset. They do not respect the neighborhood or the law. I'm requesting that you please consider carefully renewing this permit and that the planning board reopen its secret and that the city engineer be involved in every single step of the way from now on. They obviously can't take care of it themselves. Thank you. Very much appreciated consideration.
Hi, I'm Lynn Herring. I live at 50 O'Beal Street. I've been there for about two and a half years. I walk my dogs up and down Company Hill Path several times a day. And I have seen waterfalls coming off of Company Hill Path, water just shooting out. One day I was walking by and I ran into one of the contractors who said, "Oh, I have somebody who's doing this for free." And I feel like this is like a DIY project. And this is such a big, big hole in the ground and why there hasn't been oversight to make sure that the other properties are safe, that Company Hill Path is taken care of. We've got people walking up and down there every single day. There were ruts in that path that were this deep, like, you know, a foot and a half, two foot deep. The whole side of Company Hill Path was going down into the parking lot onto the street. I'm concerned for everyone's safety. I'm concerned for our neighborhood. And the other thing that concerns me too is parking. Like, this huge facility is going to be put on O'Beal Street in a residential area that already has no parking. Where are these cars going to go? This is like ruining our neighborhood. So, I'm really concerned about this. I hope you consider every single piece of palace is affecting the neighborhood and protect the citizens and not just one group of people who want to build a center. I don't think that this is the right place for something that big. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name, my name.
Hello, my name is Barbara Stentey. I live up Miss Chefs End Street.
Street.
Oh, wait, cut it out. Hello.
Just got to kind of hold it a little up.
Up, up.
No, like.
It's going down. Just keep talking.
Okay, anyway, I can speak.
So, I'm not an engineer. I'm an architect. I'm a school teacher. I'm a layman. And I, I could have told you that all these problems were going to happen on that little post-it stand on the hillside. I could see it, but this was still a thought in everybody's mind. It doesn't take a brain surgeon or an architect to know that all these problems were going to happen, and they happened. It's so tragic. That's all I have to say.
Tom, you guys want to go to Brick Street? We have a, this is a, a large project. And the city is getting many large projects. More large projects are going to come because it's an awesome place. But there's not a lot of places that have a lot of what Kingston has. A lot of it was destroyed over the last century. We don't have a lot of walkable places with a significant amount of, of, a useful walk, a safe walk, a mixed-use, vibrant community like we, we had before the last century. It's a rare commodity. And because we have that, developers are coming. Not because Kingston bends over backwards for the large developments, which they do. And which I really, I see so many mistakes happen because we don't have, for various reasons, the right sort of oversight for large development. We don't have the right kind of zoning that's going to protect us against large development. Large development comes with a lot of pressure. There's financial pressure. There's a lot of people dealing with the project. It's a big machine that really needs more management than smaller projects. And this is a project in particular where there've been so many things that the city has done to bend over backwards to make this happen. And this is a project that could be an amazing thing for the community to have an Irish Cultural Center, a huge part of the population that has a history that this would reflect. But it's a huge project with a lot of people. And there are lots of moving parts, and we need more oversight than we have had to this point. And I, I hope that we take this opportunity to go forward with a positive declaration of environmental impact because it does need more oversight as all of the large development that is, is coming. And we don't have to worry that it's going to stop. We don't have oversight and require them to, to do things to a certain standard. In fact, we'll get better and better developers because they'll know that they're investing in a town that really has high standards. Thanks a lot.
Good evening. My name is Brian Devine. I'm an AOH member. Thank you for letting me speak. I support the ICC HV project and hope you will consider allowing the project to go forward and granting your approval leading to a building permit. Our organization failed to secure a building permit in the 120-day window we were given. This was an oversight. It was an unfortunate and horrible oversight. We know and appreciate the time, energy, and expense. The City of Kingston Planning Board put into its careful consideration of the facts before deciding to grant us our approval. It has, this was done, our oversight was not done with malice. It neglected to act in that 120 days. You made your arguments, and you have heard our arguments, that our project has caused permanent non-going soil erosion or uncontrolled water runoff. But that's not true. All the problems associated with this unusually high water, high rainfall during the summer were addressed. We worked in cooperation with the city, the state engineer. We were on-site working to address and mitigate. And we submitted a plan with city's approval and installed and instituted those mitigation measures. Once this project is underway and we install the proper New York State Code complying plumbing and drainage systems, the runoff and waterfalls will be permanently addressed. Meanwhile, we know we must be vigilant and maintain the temporary mitigation measures we installed. This project is the same as it was when your approval was given, but delaying it is, is in no one's best interest. The City of Kingston is well aware, quite literally, of the trials and the tribulations we face as you are facing them too in Supreme Court because of the proper decisions you've previously made. I am asking you to please consider the time, engineering, and expense we have all spent leading up to this moment and grant us a new approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipperato.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, closed the public hearing. I am annoyed. Oh, not closing. Yeah. Sorry. Any applicants come up, please? Please state your age and record, please. Bob Carey. Artea was here.
Bill Carney.
Bill Carney. All right. We've heard a lot of cask among people and concerns. And I know, I've already mentioned this in a previous meeting. We did acknowledge that the ICC has undertaken measures to mitigate the erosion and runoff from the site. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. Our position is that we're going, and I think that everybody's going to, we're going to go on this tonight too. We're going to treat this as a new application, okay? We've taken, we've gotten the letter from Mr. Gordy, outlining his cases to why it should be a renewal instead of a new application, weighing heavily on building safeties. They put on this, they had 120 days to secure a building permit, and that wasn't, that wasn't accomplished. Tom, just, just for, to give us an update as to what the outstanding issues that were preventing applicants from acquiring the building permit. Can you speak to that, please?
Well, several weeks after the planning board had granted site plan approval of the project, my office received an application for construction. Unfortunately, they were not accompanied by any plans. I did mention that to Mr. Carey. At the time, he said he wasn't ready to supply me with the plans. However, he had asked if a permit was needed to dig the hole where the foundation would go. At the time, City of Kingston did not have a requirement for an excavation permit. So, he did not need nor require a building permit to dig a hole. He had to basically adhere to what the site plan provisions were dealing with stormwater runoff and erosion control. And I know several times the city engineer was down there and directed him on improvements he had to make as far as that went. But at no time did my department ever receive any plans so that we could issue a building permit.
Okay. And in my, in my view, the statute is pretty clear. You need to acquire a building permit in 120 days. So, as we apply, we're going to acquire one. So, the rest of the board, are they agreeing with that? That's, the decision is not going to be based on the fact that there was a hole dug and the circumstances that arose. And it's just basically that the applicant, the builder, was not secured. And that's, that's my opinion.
I think also it's important to just put on the record that we have had applicants in the past that have not met that 120-day period, and they have been required. I don't have any. I think it's important to put on the record that we have had applicants in the past who have not met the 120-day period, and they have been required to come back before the board for the site plan approval. That's been the precedent in the past.
Anybody else have any comments to add? We have a resolution. But I just want to take notice. We're going to be working in the, in the future here. I'm still a supporter of the project. I want to see this thing come to me. It's just a matter of we're going to be restarting the process at a point where everybody's comfortable, right? So, I have a resolution. Is that, is that speaking up with the rest of the board feeling that? I'm going to do a word on this one too. This is right. Not as lengthy as one or two minutes.
Not as lengthy, two, right?
Resolution of the City of Kingston Planning Board requiring that the Irish Cultural Center Hudson Valley submit a new site plan application, Section Block 1056.43-5-35.100. Whereas ICC HV, the applicant, received site plan approval on April 16, 2018 for the 16,213 square foot Irish Cultural Center located at 32 O'Beal Street, Kingston, New York 12401, Section Block 1056.43-5-35.100. And whereas the approval contained a number of conditions, and whereas one of the conditions is stated, in accordance with Kingston zoning, Section 405-38, the site plan approval granted here shall be valid for a period of 120 days from the date of the resolution for the purpose of obtaining a building permit. Failure to secure a building permit during this period shall cause the, this site plan approval to become null and void. Upon application, the planning board may extend the time within validity of the site plan approval to not more than two years from the date of the original approval. And whereas the 120 days expired were now security required building permit, resulting in the application being null and void. And whereas the applicants did not file for an extension from the site plan within the 120-day timeframe. Now, therefore, it may resolve by the City of Kingston Planning Board's powers. Section 1, the board hereby determines that the site plan approval has expired. Section 2, the board directs that the written request for an extension filed by the applicants will be treated as a new application for site plan approval. Section 3, that documents, submissions, and comments previously made or received and factual determinations of this board, which had been previously written, will remain part of this board's record. will remain part of this board's record and will continue in full force and effect, except insofar as circumstances have changed since the granting of the previous site plan approval. And section 4 of this resolution shall take effect immediately. At this time, we make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Do I have a second on that? Second by Chuck Malacca. Mary Joel O'Shea. Robert Jacobson. Matthew Mielus. Bridgette Smith-Broom. Charles Malacca. And William Madison Davis. Motion is gathered. That concludes us tonight. There's a lot of work for you guys. Let's say we can get this back on track at some point. Oh, yes, for those of you referring as part of the approval or the resolution, we'd like to refer this to the Cultural Planning Board.
If I put a whole together for a special meeting in the interim so we can move this forward, but I would like to sit down with a gentleman as well in our office with our city engineer and our building department representatives so we can get on the table exactly what you're going to need to provide to the City of Kingston for a final approval. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think you got a lot of work in the next 30 days to come back to the board. We have to have public comment, so I'm not seeing the board...
Well, the public hearing is not closed.
Yeah, we're...
Correct, but I'm not seeing the board need it in the next 30 days. I mean, I can think, you know... There's a lot to iron out.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, thank you.